Okay, it's the fourth Monday, six o'clock. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Shifflin. Mrs. Mulvena.
Here.
Mr. Quina. Mrs. DeFort. President McKinnon.
Here. We've done roll call. This time, I will entertain a motion for the approval of agenda items.
I'll move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the August 26th, 2019 agenda item.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion passes six zero. Entertain a motion for the approval of consent agenda items.
I'll move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the August 26th, 2019 consent agenda items as presented.
Support. Take it, take it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes six zero.
Can we read off to the audience what's on the consent agenda? We have a new hire on there as well.
Yes. Yes, we have, obviously, the meeting minutes from July fifteenth and August twelfth, but importantly, a new teacher hiring. And I will defer to Dr. Gabriel.
And yes, we do, and I do not see Erica, I don't believe is in the crowd today, but Erica was our final hire for the, to get us off to the school year, so I'm happy to report, first week of school, we are full in terms of our teaching staff, so very pleased to say that.
Thank you. Now we have reports, the Capitol Connections Report. Mr. Smith.
I know it's highly anticipated, but unfortunately, I don't have much of a status update from the last report, other than to say, yeah, it's the same thing, nothing's changed, still waiting for a budget, still waiting for, like a lot of school districts are, what's the updated foundation allowance and all other types of appropriations statewide, so I'm looking forward to more details in a future report, but I don't have any at this time.
Thank you. The Eaton-Orisa Report, Mrs. DeFort.
I have two reports from the two meetings that I've attended, one was July seventeenth and the last one was August twenty-first. So on July seventeenth, we had the organizational meeting, and one of the main items of regular business was a strategic plan progress update, so they showed a lot of data, which I was impressed with, and they used comparative data that was shared with updates on various work and initiatives underway, so I did bring a copy of that tonight, and if anyone wants to look at it, I would be more than happy to share with that, with them, they could take it with them, but just a couple of things, just general. They showed lots of charts like this that included districts from all over Eaton and compared scores on Newia by number of students from fall, winter, and then spring, so it was really helpful to see a clear graph of that growth. So lots of those kinds of charts that were really well done. They also shared about communications, both internal and external, as that was one of their goals, to increase the stakeholder support. And they had some very interesting ways of measuring that, again, if anyone's interested in looking further, I'd be happy to let you take this and take a look at it. They also talked about special education claim allocations by district, and Grand Ledge is the largest district, but so therefore also the largest special education allocation, but it was very interesting to see the numbers broke down in that way. Our 2018-19 special education was 4.5 million, so it's climbed considerably every year, the last three years. And that kind of, there was also Eaton County Kids Count trends, lots of interesting information there. On August's meeting, they had something, a presentation of the mobile FabLab, they called it, and the FabLab is fabrication laboratory that they have in a trailer, and they will be using that to market CPC programs that the local districts use for career exploration, and it's specifically to the STEM area, and it's grades four through nine. So we actually went out and walked onto this trailer, and it had things like a 3D printer on it, it had a welding machine, it had virtual welding. So they're going to be promoting that and taking it around to the districts, so just wanted to make sure that we are aware of that and certainly have opportunities to share that. They'll also be doing, they have one that will be the FabLab for fabrication, there'll be four more coming, a medical, I'm not gonna remember the others, but for different areas of the career, technology, education, to support those. So that was pretty interesting to see, actually be able to go and, hands-on, they had a stamping, metal stamping machine, and very cool stuff. Another information update they provided was Capitol Region Technical Early College update, and Grand Ledge has had some really good participation in that program. So in Grand Ledge, as a thirteenth grade, we've had six students, twelfth grader's ten, eleventh grader's seven, and that's, again, growing every year. And they are providing some great opportunities for the kids to have some college experience without any cost to the family. Or our district at this point in time, there's been enough funding to support it without costing anyone any dollars, so really good stuff. I'm enjoying being a part of that.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd like a copier maybe of those graphs at some point.
Sure.
To show the comparisons.
Yep.
Thanks.
Shows the trend that education is going in, technical and career-ready. Education, which is great, because that's where we're headed to. Grand Ledge Education Foundation.
No report, they will be meeting Wednesday.
Alright, thank you. And a bond update.
Just a couple of items, I met with Gary Stellar from Clark Construction last week, and probably the most important thing that I took out of that meeting was that he assured me that a year from now, they would be done with both Beagle and Holbrook. And he said, "That's fantastic, because we need to be done August fifteenth of next year." We will have a complete design, right now it's scheduled for September twentieth, so in about just under a month, that work will be ready to go out for bid for Holbrook, and then the complete design for Beagle will be done on October fourth, and that will be ready to go out for bid at that time as well. On a note that is not bond-related, last week, you saw us put out a considerable amount of communications, thanked John Ellsworth and the administrative team in regards to lead in the water at Willow Ridge. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, because I think we put a lot of information out, but I will tell you that all of those faucets were replaced and completed on Sunday morning, and a lot of praise and thanks goes to John Piper, he led the team in replacing all of those faucets. It's nice to have it fixed, and we will have to monitor it and make sure that there's no other remnants of lead in the water, but we'll continue to do that.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
You talked about Beagle and Holbrook will be done by August of next year, but what about, where's the timeline for Wakusta?
Once we have a majority of Beagle and Holbrook done, we will start the design phase for Wakusta. That's really not even scheduled till about 2021, 22.
Alright, thanks.
I will note that while I'm trying to convince my wife to take like a big trip at the end of August next year, I will be around the rest of that month if you need help moving stuff from building to building. I live in the neighborhood, so I mean, it's neighbors helping neighbors. We got that on tape, right?
They will. They are filming.
Thank you, John, I appreciate it. We've actually had some conversations about, there are several companies that specialize in moving buildings, so we're actually talking about having professionals come in that would basically move the buildings in a day and a half or two days, as opposed to us trying to piecemeal volunteers and a few maintenance and ground staff, and it's too important to get the buildings up and running correctly to allow novices to try to make that happen, so more, like John, like any of us, you know, the staff are gonna have enough challenge, setting up the rooms, unboxing, all of the things that go along with this, so we're having some conversations about how we're actually gonna logistically be able to move those without having our staff taxed with that task.
I will say East Lansing is opening two brand-new buildings tomorrow, built by Clark Construction, and in one year. And we got to see, not renderings today, but we got to see pictures, and it's really exciting. And there is still a couple panels and things missing on the outside, everything's done on the inside, so, you know, people say, "Oh, it's not ready." Well, no, those will be put up, you know, sometime in September, but everything on the inside, so, you know, we need to keep that in mind, that the inside is kind of the important part. So yeah, I saw those things today, and I was really excited for Grand Ledge, so it's exciting. Now we have public comment on non-agenda items.
Let me jump out there and introduce a couple guests that I know are here, Ms. Mangrum is here, and Dave Logel. We had mentioned, or I had mentioned to both Jill and David about having some of our students come to the board meetings and share some of the good things happening at the high school. And I think they've got three guests, unless they change the lineup for me, we've got Tabitha Gilbert, Samantha Badgley, and Lanny Low. So I don't know who, do you want to say anything, or if? She's ready, alright, welcome.
Thank you, hi everyone, so at the high school, I am part of NHS, and this year, we actually worked with the Grand Ledge community and Eaton County in adopting the Fitzgerald Park Disc Golf Course, and so our goal for that is to keep it maintained and keep it clean, so that's our goal for that.
Hi, I'm part of Grand Ledge High School's Peer Assistant Leaders Program, and our first week was a big success, as the peer assistant leaders, also known as pals, wore balloons and t-shirts the first week, so that students knew who to talk to about going to the right classes on the first week.
Okay, I'm Sam, and I'm part of Student Council, and for next week, nope, nope, next one, we have our homecoming coming up, and to kick it off, we have our female football game, September twenty-first, and then the rest of the week, we have all our themes picked out, and then Friday, there's the parade, and then the game, and then Saturday, we have the dance, and yeah, it'll be lots of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So yeah, this was something we talked about as a board, Tabitha, Lanny, and Sam, thank you for coming forward. I think we'll probably come at you with a little more idea of what we're looking for, and this is exactly kind of what we're talking about. Lanny, I was excited to hear that, because I was a pal at Grand Ledge, and I did the same thing day one, and so that's kind of fun to hear. But yeah, we want to be able to kind of bridge that gap between what's going on over there and what's going on here, and so this is kind of a small first step, but thank you for coming in and sharing, so, thank you. Thank you. And others, yes.
Hi, my name is Steve Creft, and I live on Brookside Drive, right over, actually, three houses from Beagle. And I was just sort of wondering, I know you touched on a little bit, but it'd be nice, I think a lot of people along Brookside have a little bit of anxiety about the construction that they know is gonna be taking place, so it'd be nice if we could come up with some kind of a little bit more concrete timeline, so people know when things are gonna happen. I mean, obviously, if you're adding sixteen classrooms and swimming pools and everything to a school, to a building, that's gonna create a lot of dust and dirt and traffic and noise and stuff, it'd be just nice to have some kind of timeline for us to know what's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, that kind of thing. And, you know, rumor mill is a great thing, but it does create a lot of false news, as our president would say, so it'd be nice if we got something concrete from you guys, you know, that people could say, "Oh, this is gonna happen now," I know, obviously, weather and different things affect everything, but it'd be nice to have some kind of a timeline when things are gonna happen, like when is the road gonna, when are they gonna start putting the road in, what's, you know, we've heard that the track is gonna be torn up, and, you know, when is that gonna happen, because I know there's, as a person that uses the track almost every day, it'd be nice to know when that's gonna be taken down, and when the new track's gonna be built, and, you know, different things like that, that will affect, you know, not just my neighborhood, but the whole school district, so it'd be nice, you know, there's a lot of generalizations out there, when things are gonna happen, but there's nothing really concrete that you can find on paper, on the website, that says, "This is gonna happen now, this is gonna happen then," you know, that kind of thing. So it'd be just nice if we could come up with something.
Was it Steve?
Steve.
Steve, well, a couple things, first of all, yes, you are correct, and we would like to know all of those dates as well. They are still in that design phase, and once they come out and kind of have a chance to start to bid that early October, we'll have a lot more information in regards to when they'll actually break ground, but right now, it's looking like the end of November. But before I, and I don't have anything fixed, so I'm not gonna go any further than that, but I will tell you that we'll have several community meetings, and we'll be doing a tour around the district to share that information and to publish that information, so that people will get factual information.
I mean, I haven't had a kid in the schools in twenty years, but it, you know, it'd just be nice to know.
Absolutely, and we want to share that as soon as we have it as well, but it's still a plan in the making, but we will be doing community presentations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Miranda Coburn, I have a student who is in sixth grade, was at Willow Ridge, and now is at Beagle. And like Mr. McKinnon said, we want to talk about how what's inside of the school is most important, and not putting things up on the outside of the school, and I just want to talk about our students, and I want to talk about traumas that our students endure, and how reaching out, having a school district reach out to you ten days before school starts telling you that your student is going to a different school can cause a lot of trauma from the school district, while we're trying to keep our kids away from trauma ourselves. Excuse me, I'm pregnant, and I have been very sick lately, so I'm trying to hold back any kind of sickness that I might have. So my daughter is in sixth grade, she's tough, right, but I'm getting calls from other parents who have experienced the same thing, sobbing, tears, weeping, kids struggling. I work for a school, I just did four hours of trauma training, and I don't want trauma from my kid's school, school is a safe place, it's a place for kids to go to feel safe, and these kids are feeling safe right now, and I'm just really concerned about what our district is doing to them. We are growing, we are a huge district, I'm somebody who trusts our district and wants to continue to do that, but it's hard to do when we're receiving these phone calls, and we're still accepting kids of choice, schools, from schools of choice. That's something that's really weighing on me, my daughter told me not to come tonight, because she's tough, and she thinks that she can get through it, but I'm not fighting for her. I'm fighting for kids, and I'm all about kids, obviously, I work at a high school, I see kids from Grand Ledge often, who tell me that they don't think that the school cares about them, and I'm concerned, I'm concerned for our district. So I'm here as a concerned parent, not just for my kid, but for all kids in our district. I don't think that we should be accepting a school of choice if we don't have space for the kids that are here. My daughter was at school of choice in district, and we know that that's a risk that we took, putting her in district at school of choice, but that's where our daycare was, that's where her trust was, that's where everything was that we, that we knew and loved. So finding out ten days before she had to go back to school that, hey, you're gonna have to find a, you're gonna, you're gonna have a new home, and then me scrambling to find care for her and make sure that she is getting there safe while making her feel like she is safe, was really difficult, so I just want to see that there's gonna be a solution to this problem moving forward, and like I said, just caring for the kids. I know that, I know what districts make, I know that we have to think about money, I know that that's important, we have to think about numbers, I understand that. But we also have to think about what's the most important and why we have those numbers, it's the kids, and it's the millages that these people are paying. I also know of kids that are using addresses that aren't in the district, that are still going to the school where my daughter was, and they shouldn't be, they don't live in the district. My daughter was friends with them, she stayed the night at their house. So how are we gonna make sure that we're validating those addresses, and we're making sure that we have proper information on file? So I just wanted to voice my concern about that today.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Moving to old business. I will entertain a motion, the approval of the 2019-2020 student handbook revisions.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the revisions to the 2019-2020 student handbooks as presented.
Discussion. Any discussion?
These are the changes, this is like, this is the second reading?
Correct, second reading, and if you notice, oh no, this is the student handbook, so yeah, talked about the photo and video publication. I don't think we have any more questions for you, Mr. Ellsworth. Having no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Passes six zero. Entertain a motion for the approval of Board of Education governance policies, category one.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve Board of Education governance policies, category one ends. Policies E100 through E105 as presented.
I'll second that.
And I want to note this is the second reading, first reading was in our last meeting.
Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Six zero. Is there any public comment on agenda items?
Y'all know me. For the revisions to the handbook, I know this is your second reading, and you probably read them while summer was in session. Do you guys mind, are they short enough that we can read those revisions, as well as the governance ones? I don't know how long they are, but if they're short, do you mind reading them?
Out loud?
Like, could we get you a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're happy to have copies, but there's like six pages.
Okay, that's, I didn't know.
I can read the.
We can get a, we can get you a copy if that'll work for you.
Okay, alright.
Can you read the part, though, just, it's a short memorandum of what was changed in the student handbook?
Yeah.
To do with photo and video publications.
It says, I'll read the highlighted part, "Such as, but not limited to," this has to do with, I'll just read the whole thing. "Your student may be photographed or videotaped while participating in school programs and activities. These photographs and videos may be used for school district publications," and then this is the new part, "such as, but not limited to school newsletters, the insider district websites, the district social media. Sometimes these photographs or videos may be used by the media, such as, but not limited to, on television news broadcasts in the Lansing State Journal." So that was kind of the new part.
Hello, Greg Almy, 1205 Cindella Lane. My only question is, so I know that you guys are going through a pretty arduous process of revamping your board policy, and I just, and I was wondering, because I'm not exactly sure, I have a copy of your old board policy, so obviously, that's gonna be changing. Is there, is there a place to find that board policy, is it on the school district website? Or where would I find the information as it gets updated, because, you know, I'm sure a lot of those policies do affect staff members for the school district, so that would be information that we would want to review ourselves as well, as it gets updated.
We can get you a copy.
We can get you a copy, but you know, this is a board policy, and, you know, they can be looked at and everything, but I wouldn't expect any input.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not asking for input, I'm just trying to figure out where to find it.
I just wanted to clarify, because I was confused.
Are they on, are they on the internet? They're not on the online, but we're happy to get you a copy.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Any other public comments? Comments from staff and board?
Just would like to thank the board and the administration for the continued focus on the increase in our fund balance. We didn't borrow money this year, and I still don't have the targets for the budgets that I work on, which means we don't have targets for any budget, which means we're, people should be preparing to not receive money from the state, and while our fund balance is enough to run us about a month, I think that may be the amount of time it takes to correct this problem. And so I think the board and the administration's focused on, you know, ensuring that we have that safety net, we'll make sure that our staff is paid, even though the, I won't likely be paid. So that's, I'm just, I'm happy that we've made that a focus, both in the amount of money that we've saved in interest, and then also for the fact that the people that pay me generally fight with each other too much.
Can I ask a?
Pay you as a state employee, not as. Right, not as, not as a board, yeah.
Can I ask for a clarification, I believe that I understand that if they do not pass a new budget by the end of September, then we are given the fund balance from last year, is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Funding, you mean?
Yes.
If they pass a continuing budget.
Continuation.
Okay.
But I don't know if that will happen. No money.
Okay.
Nancy and I've had some conversations about seeking potential of borrowing in case that would happen, but we'll see as we go forward.
I hope not.
I hope not, too. Yeah, I'd like to see the state get their act together.
A nice first.
Pass a budget and move forward.
Not to borrow.
Denise, could you, were you done, I'm sorry? Okay. Could you remind me the name of the program that has the grade thirteen, the technical?
It's the Career Technical Early College.
Early College, so we're still kicking ourselves for not encouraging our recent graduate to have participated in that program. Our students that were here left, but I still want to vocalize that what an opportunity that is to really, you know, in one year, post-graduation, having a two-year associate's degree, if it's any type of career you might be interested in and program, to jump on that and save yourself a few years of tuition and maybe loans and expenses, I think that's a gem that's, that needs to be talked about more, that's available to county residents, right, so it's fantastic, and we had an opportunity, it was right there, and we let it slip through our fingers, and now I just wrote a tuition check, so for the start, so, and that stung. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure that, if anyone's hearing that, and then I'll keep talking about it, but what a great program.
Yeah, the total number of credits earned from the students in all the participant districts were 3,774 credits. Some of those were the certified, the tech credits, tech ed, but some of those were towards the associate, and it's a political program.
I did want to thank, we get to sit up at this table, so regardless of how sometimes issues are brought forward, I'm not speaking to how they should be resolved, that can come later with, with some looking into and discussion, but I do appreciate people coming forward and raising concerns that they have, that that can't be easy with a round table of people, and I don't think I've ever stood at a podium and And I don't think I've ever stood at a podium and raised an issue at a public board meeting that I already wasn't prepared to speak at or asked to speak at. So I do thank you for the comments that have been brought forward.
And I wanted to echo that, because Ms. Coburn, I'm sure you're in a tough spot. I'd like, I don't know, you have talked to the superintendent yet about this, but schools of choice is a touchy subject. And we're in a very delicate balance right now with that. So I'm sorry for any stress that has caused you and Mr. Creft. Beagle's gonna be beautiful, we're gonna have an indoor walking track at the high school. So be able to walk all year round, rather than just an outside track. I'll see you there. But thank you for coming to the meeting.
I'd like to thank administration and staff for having a great opening week of school. All opening days have their glitches, and we always do. I always get the, the transportation issues and all that on the first day. And, but that's part of the, you know, new routes and new, and, but when you have 5,300 kids, 5,400, you know, it might take a little bit. But I think administration and staff worked really hard to get everything ready, and we're up and running. So it's no small task, so thank you for that.
You know, I will echo those remarks and just point out that our Transportation Department works extremely hard to transport 3,500 students to and from school every day. And that's not without mishaps. But when you think about 3,500 people getting on a bus and going from point A to point B, and it's not just one point, it's multiple points. They do an exceptional job. And also, I'll point out that this year, our Transportation Director Pete Buchholz had worked on a Bus Driver of the Year. So he had collected a lot of the comments from parents in regards to the bus drivers and how great they are. And so many parents wrote in how thankful they were for the smiling face when the kids got on the bus, and knowing the kids were safe, and just went on and on and on. And Pete was able to disseminate those remarks to the bus drivers, and they just do an amazing job. Similarly, I would recognize our maintenance and custodians for getting the buildings ready. The buildings look fantastic, our grounds are very sharp. And we threw them a little bit of a curveball last weekend, and they hit it out of the park. So their work and effort is very much appreciated. And finally, I'll point out that, you know, everybody thinks school started last Monday, but really, about three weeks ago, I saw a migration of our teaching staff start to show up at the buildings. And they were in getting classrooms around and working on the classrooms. It takes more than just a day or two to get things up and running. And our staff is very committed, and it's wonderful to work with such a great group of educators, including our administrators. It's great to be back at school, and it's been a great start.
Thank you. Other staff? Okay, future topics. We have a board bond advisory committee meeting, Monday, September 9th, at 5:00 PM. Saw it in room 107, followed by a work session meeting that night, the 9th, at 6:00 PM, in the Administrative Conference Room. We are adjourned at 6:34.